Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order at seven o'clock. See, we'll begin with the call, roll call. Those present in the Board of Trustees, please indicate so when your name is called. Are you ready?
You want to do it?
Oh, you want me to do the roll call?
Well, I can do it. You just wanted to make the notes. All right, so Supervisor Hathaway, present. Treasurer Palmer?
Present.
Bert Flintoff, absent. Trustee Corto, absent. Trustee Jerome?
Present.
Trustee Noel?
Present.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Present.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. The settlement is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes proposed to the agenda? Seeing none, someone prepared to move.
Move to approve.
Move by Palmer, support by Noel. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. We have two sets of minutes. The first is a special meeting of June 14th. Is someone prepared to move approval of the draft minutes from June 14th unless there are any corrections?
So move.
Okay, move by Jerome, support by McLaughlin. All those in favor of approving the draft minutes from the special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't think we need a roll call vote for approval of the minutes. If we're spending money. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 14th. Twenty twenty-two. Are there any changes to the minutes from that meeting? It's a little lengthier than the special meeting minutes.
Yes. Move the minutes as presented.
Moved by Jerome to approve the draft minutes. Is there a second? Second by McLaughlin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. That brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees. So everyone should have received these in the meeting packet. That brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. If you're present, please approach the table and speak when it is your turn. Trustee Jerome, are you able to keep time? When your time is up, please bring your comments to a close and out of respect for all of the other speakers.
Pam Boyd, Sciop resident. I'm sorry, most of you missed the opportunity this morning to watch Sciop's fire department and five other fire departments at the training burn on EWF Solutions Ryan Yapple's property. Thank you Patrick for making an appearance and thank you Gillian Carey for attending over four and a half hours of it. If you smell a bit of burning, I attended this very important fire department training exercise as well. Thank you to Chief Hood and Assistant Chief Armstrong for the explanation and the process. It was a well-oiled machine and to all of Sciop's firefighters. I really enjoyed meeting you. If there's anything I can ever do for you, just call. You are an awesome group. It was also great to meet Ryan Yapple, owner of the property, in person. He brought several of his employees out to watch the house burn and they even brought one of the products they sell, Jiffy Pop popcorn, which got a bit of a photo op. Yes, it did pop and burn along with the house. A big shout out to all the EWF Solution employees I had the pleasure of meeting today. Sorry, the more board members were not there to meet you too. I also want to thank Ryan for giving the firefighters another product they sell, hydration popsicles. I think it was a big hit. To the residents of Sciop Township, take note. The township has an attorney budget for the attorneys Homier and Fink of one hundred and fifty thousand for the twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two, twenty-three calendar year. This figure is up from seventy thousand last year. I have in my hands the FOIA'd attorney bills from Foster Swift Michael Homier for the months of January through April. January was nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars, February eight thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents, March thirteen thousand two forty-three twelve. This included a hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents for mileage to travel from Grand Rapids area to Sciop Township Hall for his one in-person board meeting. April had two bills, five thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for general attorney time and eight thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for Flintoff versus the township. The burden of blame for that bill, I feel, should be placed on the ignorance of some on this board, just like how they stupidly have taken the BSNA away from the clerk. Where's, where's the administrator, interim administrator, by the way? So in those four months, the total Foster Swift bill was forty-four thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. Talk about a house burn. To the board. Have there been enough resignations for some of you, some of you board members, to wake up and see that the last several months of township management have been a failure? You all have been led to believe if past rumors are correct, the clerk Flintoff is the problem. Based on the resignation letter of Mary Gillis and others, this tells a different story. And if you trustees can't man up and stop the problems, then please quit and let somebody else take your place. Sciop Township is yet another week that lives up to its dysfunction junction name. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Heisey, five-two-five Woodgrove. Thanks for having me back. I was here a few weeks ago. I'm here to talk about Arbor Grove. So we've had about fifteen of my neighbors present to you. I'd like to sort of give you the scope of what we've been concerned about. You know, I'm not a radical here. You know, I have to say I missed the whole planning commission thing and I really, once I took a look at that blueprint is when it kind of knocked, knocked me out of the park there and thirty-five units apparently. And I can't, someone would like an explanation how it is our town says to actually have more units on this five acre site with only three point eight-nine acres of buildable land next to a wetland. Say, oh, well, we'll build a berm, we'll have retention panel. Who's going to care for that? I mean, the southeast corner's got contamination. That's going to be flowing. You know, seventy-one percent of the trees will get knocked out. You know, I'm not trying to be a tree hugger here, folks, but the tree's got roots. And all that absorbs all that water. And we already got a lot of water. If you drive down, see, look at the right-hand side, it hasn't rained in a while. You got a pond over there. We're downstream from that kind of stuff. You know, and I just don't quite get all this. You know, I live in this town. It's a beautiful town. It's kind of small-time government. Love it. Great. Good stuff. Why this property next to a wetland? Why is it grown from in November fifty thousand square feet to sixty-six-two to sixty-six-seven in March? Why is it, why is the town asking to have more units built? I mean, there's houses going up. You got a tax base here, folks. Taxes are low. You know, I don't think an extra unit here or there. You know, they're building a garage end-to-end for two, for some of these units, every third unit. It make, this, none of this makes any sense. You know, the site plan by Carlisle Wirtman said, hey, build on it, keep some of the natural features. I thought we were in for something kind of like that Trillium, something like that. You know, whatever. We're not NIMBYs. We figure, build something that makes some sense. We're with you. We like it too. Share the town, share the trees, share the natural beauty, not rip it all out, send all that water our way. You know, when the Carlisle Wirtman planks for it, what does the developer says? Yeah, thanks, but no thanks. You know, and just because you can, according to some old zoning thing that's out of date, doesn't mean you should. And that's what we're asking from you people, you know? To think about it and do something that's consistent with the site plan of this whole town that we enjoy. You know, there's twenty years zoning ordinance, ordinance. I mean, it may be invalidated. One of my colleagues is just trying to get a freedom of information. I just get some information and he's getting stiff. I don't, I don't understand that. What is going on here? You know, I don't, I don't know what trees cost, but I think three hundred thousand bucks to the tree fund asylum seems like a healthy chunk of change. That's great for somebody else's trees. Ours are all going away and all that water's coming our way with the contamination to boot. My colleagues are on the south side, you know, they're worried about selling, and the one side, they're worried about selling their houses. People have their salt pumps going double time now. I don't want to be all Chicken Little here, but I think, I think we probably hopefully agree that climate change is real and it's not going to help our situation any. So, you know, it looks like I ran my course. It's the first time. Gosh, I guess I have to leave now. Well, listen, thank you for your attention. I just want you to take the big picture here because there's a lot. This isn't just a one-off. There's a lot going on here. There's a lot of reasons why this is wrong. You know, you can build something that's beautiful. We're good with that. We don't care. Share the town. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. Alan Durban, also from Parkwood. Bob Heisey submitted to you within the last couple of days or so, his document, and I don't have a document for you tonight, but I was just kind of emphasizing a couple of subjects that were in his document. Both related to process and just were looking for some feedback from the trustees. His document, item number six was the official site plan review, which is prepared by Carlisle Wardman. It contains several to-be-addressed issues. And I'll share four excerpts and I'll speak to that verbatim from that document. Item one, the entire site is to be cleared and mass graded. Four hundred and seventy of the six hundred and fifty-five protected trees are to be removed at seventy-one percent. As trees are the most viable and significant natural feature on the site, we recommend a different layout of buildings be pursued. Keep in mind, this is the Carlisle Wardman verbatim. Item two, as noted by the soil constraint map, red areas are considered very limited for development with one or more features that are favorable, unfavorable for the specified use. Soil limitations cannot be overcome without major reclamation, special design, or expensive procedures. Poor performance and high maintenance can be expected. Map provided shows sixty percent of the parcel in red. Item three, demonstrate how soil limitations on the site will be overcome. Item four, proposed site plan is an expansive development taking up, taking up ninety percent of the available land that will remove a number of natural resources. We suggested the applicants should consider a product that would allow for a more compact development. They responded. The client does not have a product as suggested. In addition, the client prefers to meet current zoning requirements. My second subject is item number thirteen, the wetland buffer, potential ordinance violation. This was first presented by Bill Doty back in March of twenty, on March twenty-eighth at the planning commission. At that time, he had a commission, he had a conversation with Commissioner Hyde, who referred him to Doug LeWan on that subject. What's, what's an issue here is a buffer of fifty-five feet that is required from the wetland to any structure. There's zone one, which is fifteen feet, which is not on the site plan, zone two, which is thirty feet, and then zone three, which is ten feet, which is comprises the fifty-five feet. Bill Doty sent two follow-up emails to Mr. LeWan, one on April fourteenth and one on June eighth, and there was no response. So our big picture here is we ask who at the township will get into these details and provide some answers. In the first case, planning commission seemed oblivious to the site plan review. Will those Carlisle Wardman recommendations be addressed? In the second case, will trustees ultimately determine if there is a wetland buffer violation? As ever, this is a proposal not in the spirit of the Sciop master plan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak this evening?
Hello, Kathleen Brandt, Sciop resident. One of the last assignments that David Rowley did before he left was to do a survey for folks in the financial staff to see what their skills were, to see if there were skills to fill slots on a part-time basis, knowing that the finance staff is short. And so he did that in a very professional manner. And I've had a look at those. And I want to share some of the comments. So one of his items was please list your highest degree earned. Please list any applicable coursework and approach, please attach appropriate transcripts. This person replied, I do not have my transcripts. Sciop Township has never asked for this information. They have also never questioned my education, skills, or competency. Asking for this information is an insult at best. He also lists for questions, lists organizations for which you belong. And the answer here is prior to COVID, I was a member of MGFOA and possibly GFoa. Frankly, at this time, I do not remember, and it makes no difference. And then finally, there was a statement to, that the person attests to the information and that they would sign this. And so this response says, I will not sign this document. It is a complete insult to treat this fact-finding assignment of yours as a type of legal deposition for the staff. Now, I'm pointing this out because those were the only kinds of contrary, unprofessional, disrespectful comments of any of the financial staff. Of any of them. They all satisfied the requirements, signed and dated, delivered on time. So I just wonder if anybody can guess who submitted this survey? Anybody?
I know who did it.
Yeah, would you like to speak then? Because I will.
It was Sandy.
It was Sandy who wrote.
And a degree.
I just asked the question. That's enough, Donna. This is my time. This is a disrespect.
Time for back and forth.
This is a disrespectful.
Don't want to hear answers.
This is a disrespectful form of address to a professional administrator.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Patrick, I want you to note that I'm the only one that he cut off, not the two gentlemen that spoke, who went over three minutes. I'm asking for your assistance. Get some, some fairness here.
Anyone else who would like to speak during public comments? Anyone else who would like to speak during public comments? Do we have anyone attending remotely?
We do. We have Kevin Jackson, followed by Bill Doty. Kevin, you can go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Kevin Jackson. I'm with the Parkwood condo association. And I'm speaking about the Arbor Groves proposed development next door. I think our neighbors, my neighbors have stated our case very factually. And I understand your legal obligations. If the developer meets all of the requirements, standards, and legal matters, you must approve their development. However, if they don't meet all those requirements, including waivers, a waiver is an excuse not to meet a requirement. If you're going to issue waivers for them, then they are not meeting the requirements, which should then make the Board of Trustees not approve the current development as proposed. So I wanted to make that point this evening, that if they don't meet those proposals, those requirements, then this development as proposed should be declined. However, again, as we've stated, we're for development that fits with the spirit of the community. So again, do your responsible due diligence and do what's right for the citizens of Sciop Township. Thank you.
And you, next is Bill Doty. Bill, you can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Bill Doty, four sixty-five Woodgrove. I'm here this evening to support my other fellow Parkwood residents and the points that they have made, and I concur with them one hundred percent. Thank you.
And you, next is David Reed. David, you can go ahead.
Good evening. This is David Reed. After reading Mary's letter of resignation from the position of newsletter editor, I was left wondering when the board members are going to wake up and rein in this petty tyrant. After watching the January sixth hearing, Allison and I see a similarity between Trump and Hathaway. Just bully, obfuscate, and lie your way through a problem. The now vacant position will be difficult to fill if you expect to recruit a person with the same qualifications and integrity as Mary. Her letter clearly describes what will be in store for an editor who expects to be able to publish a factual and meaningful document. So it might be best to put the newsletter on hiatus. I was once the editor of the township newsletter. I understand completely the position Hathaway created for Mary. This newsletter must be a reflection of truth, not alternate facts, in quotes. I wish I could say her letter might make a change, but this is just one more in an ever-increasing line of resignations of honorable people who won't tolerate the bullying, lies, and obfuscation of Hathaway. I implore the members of the board to review the current supervisor's job description and compare it to the one that is actually on file from the MTA. I ask that you restore the position to what it is legally required, one with Spartan powers and little control, not the one we now have, which empowers the supervisor with total, absolute, and unquestioned authority over any and all township activities. To do nothing now condemns the township to at least two more years of totalitarianism. I mourn for the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rob Pattinson. Rob, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township. I'd like to thank Kathy Noel for spearheading the Sciop Township Gelman dioxide bloom work over the last several years. I'd like to thank Dan McNell for designing the study and for finding the method five-twenty-two that has resulted in all of these new findings of dioxide well north of where it was expected to be. Like to thank Roger Rail and Card for documenting Gelman for decades. And Jennifer Khan and Patty Benson for getting us the Simply Labs test, hundred and fifty-five dollar test that they revealed in Card and then Kathy Noel shared with us at the last BOT. And I'd like to thank Will Hathaway for posting all that information on Nextdoor. We ordered a Simply Labs test last week and it arrived in two days. We will send the sample out for testing this week. I can't tell you how good it feels to finally have a test available. It's been eight months and we applaud your efforts to get us closer to resolving the poisoning of our wells by Gelman. I would like to see Sciop subsidize the hundred and fifty-five dollar tests. All benefit from the data generated by these tests. The current results prove the plume has gone much farther north than expected. Where else has it extended? West, east, even south? Let's find out. If you subsidize the test, we will get more tests done. Granted, Gelman should be paying for these. I would also suggest a geologic survey to find the underground channels that the dioxide is following, as hypothesized by Dan McNell last fall. And I believe the current test proves his hypothesis that it is indeed following the low ground to the Huron River. I hope we have a grad student at U of M who will research the dioxide-related cancers that have happened over the last forty years in Sciop Township. And I could not agree more with the previous speakers about the resignation letter and the damning proof that that is. And that's, it's another sign, and it's not sustainable. And thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pat Stein, followed by Diane Benson. Pat, you can go ahead.
Good evening. This is Pat Stein. I've been a resident from Sciop Township for nearly fifty years. I also want to comment on the resignation of Mary Gillis as the editor of the Sciop Township newsletter. Mary has fifteen years' experience as a writer and editor of books. She has distributed twelve issues to ten thousand homes in the last few years. And she has resigned from that position of being the editor because she was being coerced to print falsehoods. And when she doesn't agree to include Will Hathaway's falsehoods in the newsletter, what has he done? He's written a scathing letter or reprimand and referred to her as being untrustworthy and deceitful. Now, if you look at the Sciop Township Personnel Handbook that the board adopted last month, you go to page twenty-three, under the rules of conduct, you will find examples of improper conduct that will result in disciplinary action. In particular, look at item number six. Abusive, threatening, coercive treatment of a member of the public or of another employee. I would say that's clearly what's happened here with Mary Gillis. Supervisor Hathaway wants to use the Sciop newsletter for his own gain, whether it be self-promotion or campaign. So I'm with David Reed on the fact that this newsletter should be shelved, because if we cannot trust this newsletter to give the actual news, then all it is is fake news. Without Mary Gillis, I don't think we can trust a newsletter from any point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Diane Benson. Diane, you can go ahead.
Okay, good evening. This is Diane Benson, four-five-eight-three Breeze Wood Court. Been here for twenty-two years. I also want to thank and applaud Mary Gillis for all her hard work being the newsletter editor. I enjoyed the newsletter. And I know from working a short time at the township last summer, Mary was one that always checked facts and made sure that the newsletter reflected the facts by talking to sources. And one of them that I read in her letter was the source of talking to Administrator Rowley about the rules of order, where he stated that he did not write the rules of order, but he reviewed the board's rules of order several times, and that's what Mary had printed. It is unfortunate that she was not able to publish the truth. And most unfortunate was that she felt that she was bullied to the point that she had to resign. Thank you, Mary, on behalf of many, many residents. And I also think the newsletter should be shelved for now. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more.
All right, then we can move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. The public hearing is the proposed ordinance amendment to the Woodview Commons PUD-FSP number two-two-zero-zero-seven. And everyone has the materials. This is actually the bulk of the materials in our meeting packet this evening. I'd like to invite the developer, David Stolman. I don't know if you have others with you this evening, but please come on up and give us a presentation. And then after your presentation, we'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to comment on the proposed amendments. That will be your time. Please.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you all again. My name is David Stolman.
Can I get a promoted Matthew Bush? When you're ready.
You're working on camera, David. You don't want to be on camera.
I used to see myself.
Throw some pretty pictures, though.
Put something up there, quick. Go ahead and start again. Good evening. Nice to see you all again. My name is David Stolman. I'm here tonight representing Jackson Road Soviet LLC, the petitioner for tonight's amended and restated Woodview Commons final PUD plan. I'm here with Matt Bush, our civil engineer, represents that firm, and Tony Kratz, who's behind us, architect who represents Hobson Black. As I'm sure you recall, I was here before you on May 10th for your consideration of the amended and restated Woodview Commons preliminary PUD. At that meeting, we received a unanimous approval, subject to various conditions and technical issues raised by Planning Commission, Carlisle Warpman, your planning consultant, OHM, your engineering consultant, and this board. On June 6th, we submitted response letters to the township addressing these various conditions and technical matters, along with revised plan sheets for each of the items. On June 13th, we made a full presentation to the Planning Commission for final PUD approval and received a unanimous recommendation from them for final PUD approval. On June 21st last week, we received a request from the township to resubmit a full plan set to the township for a complete and final review. A new full plan set that included all the revisions from the June 6th letter and additional revisions to address the fire department comments was submitted to the township the following day on June 22nd. We have worked with the township and its consultants throughout this process. And at this point, based on our conversations with them, we are not aware of any outstanding issues to be resolved. The development agreement is nearly finalized, and we are awaiting final comments from the township attorney and staff. We are anticipating that when we receive these full review letters, there'll be few, if any, comments from consultants before the next Board of Trustees meeting on July 12th. To conclude, we are very proud to be here tonight to present this plan to you. As it appears, we have resolved all the issues that were raised in the prior review letters, as well as the conditions that the Planning Commission had raised in early May. So we are here tonight to answer any questions you or the public might have. We believe that our revised amended plan is a great example of private-public cooperation. A thoughtful design that not only protects the sensitive nature of the Great Blue Heron Rookeries, but a plan which protects wetlands, provides additional open space, reduces tree impacts, and will deliver a great development within the Sial community that everyone will be proud of. This plan is different from our currently approved plan in only the best of ways. We'd like to thank this board, the Planning Commission, township staff, OHM, and Carlisle Warpman for working diligently with us over the course of the last six months through this amendment process. Again, we are excited to be here tonight, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you or the public have about the Woodview Commons amended and restated final PUD plan. Thank you.
We'll call a public meeting to order and have an opportunity for members of the public to speak. And then after that, we'll have a chance for members of the board to ask questions or make comments. So we'll call a meeting, I mean, call the public hearing to order at 7:34. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on the topic of amendments to the PUD plan for Woodview Commons? Yeah, coming to this end of the table, you guys can stay up, and then that way, if there's questions to you, you'll be around here to answer them.
Gillian Carey. Lula Avenue. I have sat in on a lot of meetings, as you know, but I have sat in on every, pretty much every meeting for Woodview. And I have to say, and I've seen a lot of developments come in front, PUDs and whatnot. And I have to say that Woodview has jumped over hoops for Sial Township. They have, is this the third time that you've re... It's more than that, right?
I don't know. You'd have to ask my children.
So it's been a lot, and they have, and I've seen other developers like Arbor's Grove that is just, you know, not willing so far to make any changes, but this has been really great. I'm in full support of this, but I do have to say, I noticed you have a four-story apartment building. Okay, I don't want them to change their plans again. However, I was just at the firefighters' house burning today, and there was a ladder truck, and it wasn't ours. And we are, Sial Township is approving hotels, four-story, five-story, six stories, and we do not have a ladder truck, and we need one. So this really needs to be a priority, and I don't believe that we should stop Woodview for this, but we need to make this a priority. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who would like to speak during a public hearing?
Pam Boyd, Sial resident. Thank you, Gillian. Your comments were really good. And I want to thank you developers because you have brought, because I have been to a lot of meetings, Planning Commission, over the last couple of years as well. And you stand out head and shoulders above some of the other developers that we've had come through here who are more bullying to some of these residents and to the township. And so I just want to say that this Board of Trustees should use them to, as the bar, as a high bar for dealing with developers in the future. Thank you. And thank you.
Are there other members of the public who would like to speak during the public hearing? If not, then, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Thanks. I always forget.
Jonathan Greifer. Jonathan, you can go ahead.
Hey, taking my comments. I just had a lot of experience in the past working with David and want to echo those comments that others have said excellent folks to work with, to have them develop your land. Having literally sat in the middle of the trail wood development, every concern that we have had has been addressed in a professional and fast manner. Dave's got a crew. They work well together, and I just want to, again, give my appreciation to the fact that he is a fantastic developer, and let's get this thing finished for him. Thank you.
That's it?
Oh, wait. One more. Rob Pattinson. Rob, you can go ahead.
Thank you.
Rob, we lost your audio. Can you?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. I really appreciate that this developer has worked with the township. I think that has been, as Pam said, up a very high bar and should be the model that others should follow. I would like just to confirm that the Mason that is within the 300-yard boundary for the Great Blue Heron Rookery, that that will be built off-season and that the lower, the southern section of the construction project will also be built off-season. Thank you.
Rob, there will be no construction within the, if you want to call it the Blue Heron Rookeries buffer zone during the timeframe that we set forth. The township asked for additional two weeks to extend it from August 1st to August 15th. So we've really narrowed the construction schedule, but any work in that buffer zone will be done during the non-nesting season. Try and say that properly.
And how about north of that boundary line?
North of that boundary line, we will be doing construction during normal seasons. The buffer zone is the recommended guideline from the state, and we're complying with that recommendation and adding in an additional two weeks of additional time, just in case the nesting is incomplete.
In case, we can devote to close the public hearing. Okay, let's, okay. Let's declare it closed at 7:40. And this is time for members of the Board of Trustees, if you have questions or comments on the development amendments, please, trust me.
Okay, I had just a general question. I saw part of the, some of the units were to be devoted exclusively to seniors.
We had pressed that at the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, after talking to our lawyers and to apartment managers, it's illegal for us to do that. It violates the Fair Housing Act, so we were instructed that we are not allowed to do that. We did, however, do a calculation that's here. That we wanted to, we presented this to the Planning Commission. As much as we can't target or market towards seniors, we want to make it clear that it's hard to see from just the site plan looking down on it. But of the entire 548 units, 44% of them are, if you want to call them targeted towards seniors, meaning most seniors do not want stairs. If it has stairs, it's not considered, you know, attractive to seniors. And 44% of our units do not have stairs. That includes the four-story building, all the ranch units on the first floor of all the stacked flats, and then all the ranches. So that's a total out of the 548 units, 244 of them are what we call one-level, no-stair residential units. As far as marketing, it's illegal. And, you know, we thought we could do that, and then I was chastised for suggesting it.
Regarding the statement you just made, how do they build these communities that, for seniors?
They have to all be seniors. That's the distinction. I thought there was some way of splitting the baby, and then, like I said, the lawyers started yelling at me.
I don't really have any questions. I will say that I have seen many iterations of this site plan, and I will say that in agreement with everyone that I think that the applicant has made every possible attempt to create a product that he can still sell, but at the same time meet some of the requirements of the township that benefit the citizens or truly is a public benefit to this, not only from a housing perspective, but from has protection and the preserve, the mix of housing that's available. So I would just commend them, and I would recommend approval.
Well, I just would like to thank you for everything you've done to accommodate, you know, the requests for changes. And I'm particularly fond of the idea of protecting the rookery, so I really appreciate that. And to kind of, you know, build on everyone else's comments. I think you've been remarkable in your approach, and it's laudable, and I appreciate that. I think that it's going to be a great neighbor for the preserves, and the pathway is going to be a real enhancement for everybody in the community. So thank you very much for your efforts. I'm looking forward to seeing it built.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And I concur. I think that, like, like, serving on the Planning Commission, we together saw many versions of this as it moved through the process. And at every step of the way, I feel as if you've been listening not only to people from the township, but members of the public in terms of what people have, as concerns or aspirations for the project or in the neighborhood. One thing I'd like to emphasize is, because I was a part of this, is that we negotiated with, because this is a planned unit development, there's an element of community benefits that are a part of the sort of the agreement between the developer and the township. And in this case, we had a long, long process of talking through what the different community benefits would include. And one of them, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, is donation, monetary donation to the fire department to help pay for a ladder truck. So, yeah, so there was some thought given to that. I don't think, I mean, ladder trucks are very expensive. I don't think it's enough in and of itself to buy a ladder truck, but it's a step in that direction. And I think that is something that the township is looking for. I know it's something that chief, our fire chief, has had on his wishlist for some time. So thank you. Thank you very much. I think unless there's other comments from members of the board, we can...
Okay, well, I really would like to say on behalf of, you know, our whole group, obviously, it was a bit of a struggle when we found out about the Blue Heron area. And reaction, the township was very appropriate to us, you know, as far as asking us what we could do. And I don't think we would have gotten here without, you know, Supervisor Hathaway's help in terms of trying to come up with a plan that would work. All the hard work by Carlisle Warpman, by OHM, because there were significant engineering issues and planning issues on how to make this all work. And we couldn't have done this without you. So as much as you've thanked us for, you know, our good work, it wasn't just a built more related, you know, we came up with a great plan and submitted. It really has been a public-private venture of sorts, and we really do appreciate your cooperation. We wouldn't be here if there wasn't some flexibility and understanding on the part of the township and its consultants. So thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, I think we've concluded the public hearing and the discussion. So we will move on to our next agenda.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. So the next item is reports. And I believe our first report is the administrator, administrator is... Connect remotely. Oh, there you are. Hope your sound is muted.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to give a few updates tonight. And then, then some, kind of a new topic. The first update is where we stand with the Finance Director search. We currently have an individual who's passed through two sets of interviews with, I wouldn't say glowing colors, but certainly with pass-through. And we felt needed to go and qualified to move to the next step. We're hoping to hold us and schedule a third round of interviews in early July. I think the date we're centering on is July 8th. That would be Friday. Our recruiter, Amy Sell, has proposed this scenario, which will be a full day with this individual in person. With a breakfast brunch, with two to three board members, trustees, especially because the other, so far, the three officers have had an opportunity to meet this individual. So this would be an opportunity for the trustees primarily to be able to meet and speak with this person. In addition to the breakfast brunch, just to allow flexibility, another two to three board members or trustees could visit with the candidate at a dinner meeting. So we'd have essentially two dinner or two food-related meetings throughout the day that board members could, including trustees, could meet with the candidate. During the daytime, most of that would be set aside for in-depth conversations with our current accounting staff, including Sandy Nagler and Rebecca. Marty. So this would be, give a lot of opportunity for, for feedback. I think the, the accounting staff was interested in getting a little more details and a little bit more into the nuts and bolts of their personal jobs to see how that would fit with, with this particular candidate. So if you put on your calendar, we're currently looking at July eighth on Friday. This will be a full-day thing, and if you could make either the morning or the evening meeting, the trustees especially, so that you can meet and talk with the candidate, that would be wonderful. The next update is, has to do with our year-end closing and preparation for the audit. As you know, we contracted with, with Nick. Sorry, I'm having trouble remembering his name. Armegon, Armegolos. And he has been meeting, he had his first meeting with Sandy Egler this past weekend. And I, I've spoken with both Nick and Sandy to find out the progress. He said it was working quite well. There, they have a good rapport, and I think it's going to go very smoothly, at least between the two of them. I'm a little worried and cautious. Because although Sandy has provided several documents, a list of potential entries that need to be made in order to help close books and provide, provide year-end reports, and then, of course, prepare for the audit. The clerk has provided Mr. Armegolos a copy of her lawsuit against the Board of Trustees, R C I O. I'm not sure I understand what they has to do with, with the project at hand and what he's been contracted to do, but I just wanted to, to at least let the board know that this has happened. And to be aware, we'll have to see what, if there's a particular agenda that I don't know about that would involve the lawsuit, this individual. And the last thing I have to talk about is as a Parks and Pathways Director, and this is, we're not prepared to move forward, certainly not today. But, but I wanted to give you a heads up that this is, this is definitely coming down the pipe. So as I, I've been, we made aware recently that there's a sense of urgency to establish a director-level staff position to help leadership or provide leadership administration and operation maintenance of our township parks and other properties, as well as the pathways. The township levies about point six-four mils for Parks and Pathways has a budget of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And working with various citizen advisory boards and Board of Trustees, this director would work towards executing the vision and objectives of these boards while administering the funds in an effective and efficient way. See, while growing the programs, the director would be very hands-on, and in many cases, performing fieldwork and this along with administrative tasks. Essentially, this will be a one-person show. The same person that'll be preparing budgets, attending meetings of these advisory boards, the Board of Trustees, and then in addition, will be, at least at the beginning, will be clearing pathways, picking up, picking up obstructions on the pathways, making sure that parks are being appropriately used. So a lot of this is going to be very hands-on to begin with. And I think, I think this probably will be a very good start for, for this particular program. We do have a potential candidate in mind, and are, we're working through and completing a proposed job description and having discussions with the candidate. We do hope to have a proposed action item at one of the next few board meetings to approve the position, the job description, and hopefully to hire a candidate. And that's, that's what I have this evening. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to, to cycle back.
Trustee No.
Hey, Jim, I have a couple of questions. In terms of the parks issue, what is the current amount of money remaining in the Parks and Pathways Fund?
I don't have that answer. Maybe, maybe Supervisor Hathaway has that number. I know the budget is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't believe there's, there's been much spent at all in terms of administration.
Not, not on administration as so much as on construction. Yeah, most, most of the, the bulk of the funds are spent on construction of the pathways and trailheads at the parks and preserves and so on.
I just would like to get an accounting, exactly what's there, what's not there.
I think we'll have to get that to you, not tonight.
Okay, that's fine. And then I also have a question regarding what you said about Nick. How many hours has he actually worked?
I have not seen, he has not provided me yet with a timesheet, but I know he was this past weekend for several hours with, working with Sandy. So I ventured to guess four to six hours, if I had to guess, but I have not seen his timesheet yet. It's only been this one day so far.
Has he worked with Jessica at all?
She had, he had a conversation prior to that, when we were first kind of setting up the, the project itself.
And what's the plan?
This was prior to contract, so I don't believe that this will be necessarily billable hours.
What is the plan for his employment here in the future?
There, there is, after the project is completed, there is no plan for employment inside of the option.
Okay, and when you say the project, you mean what?
Is, his contract is, is almost exclusively to, to help prepare the year-end closing, prepare the year-end reports, prepare for the audit, and then be available for questions. And essentially, it helped proceed with the audit, all the way to the very end where the audit is then presented to the Board of Trustees. So at the, I guess at that particular point in time, his contract would be complete.
So has the board seen the contract?
Yes.
Okay, I don't remember seeing it, but okay. Okay.
Other questions for the Township Administrator? How, how about we proceed then with the Gelman Report?
Okay. All of the board members received the press release that was issued last week describing the results of the third round of residential well testing. This testing revealed low levels of dioxane detections in nine new residential wells. The levels ranged from zero point one five to zero point eight-nine hearts per billion. All of the detections were north of the northernmost detection from the second round of sampling. The detections are approximately one mile north of what was thought to be the delineated boundary of the plume. So in other words, these detections are in an area that no one expected the plume to be going, kind of in a nutshell. The next steps are several of us, several of us from the township are meeting with Washtenaw County Environmental Health and Keith Gadway on Thursday to discuss our plan for our next round of well testing. Residents have continued to submit requests for well testing. We have approximately sixty in our current target area and approximately fifty outside of what we have identified as our current target area. The details for the next round of testing have not yet, yet been worked out. As soon as they're worked out, we will be sharing them. There is a Court of Appeals hearing next Thursday at eleven AM, in person in Lansing, on the Gelman Appeal. And I will also say tomorrow at ten AM on W E M U eighty-nine point one, I'll be participating in an interview on issues of the environment focused on Gelman.
Is it, is it wanted, or?
It's pre-recorded.
Oh, so you'll be recording the interview for later broadcast?
I don't know what time it broadcasts.
Okay, well, we'll have to put that information out once we have it. Is that, is that the conclusion of?
That is the conclusion, thank you.
Thanks. We don't have the clerk with us this evening, we have the treasurer, however.
Really good news. Some of it might be questionable. You will be getting your tax bill within two weeks. Everything's gone to the mailer, and they're preparing a notice about those twenty-twenty-one levies, which will be on the summer bill. So that job is on time and finished. Also, I am very glad to report that the, all of the checks in there, that missing that, the people have been very, very good, and everyone has replaced their check. They, they've just been very, very helpful. So wanted to give that report. It's settled, it's done. That's pretty much it.
Right, well, that's good news.
Donna, I had a question, so I just looked at my tax bill. Are, is there an explanation?
That's what I mentioned, that there will be one in the bill.
Yeah.
You'll still get a bill, Kathy, because they, they just go en masse to the mailer. So, but, or I can just give you a copy of the information piece that would be in the bill.
Okay, it's just that it wasn't in mine.
No, because you asked early for a copy. You were out of the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, broadband task force.
There's been no meeting of broadband task force, there's been no meeting of the L B C, there have been no meeting in Parks and Recs. However, I will remind people that Parks and Recs, the joint meeting with T A P is coming up in July. Patrick, you know the date better than I do.
All the, for, for.
No, for the T A P and Parks Recreation Joint Symposium here at the township.
Oh, yeah, that's July thirteenth.
Is coming up, and I would also second, and I, I agree with Kathy's questions, but we were providing a full, detailed job description for the park's position in relation to the budget associated with it, which budget should be charged, obviously, the salary level that we've been planning. We do have a candidate that's ideally suited, she's worked with us before. She has the ecological ecumen to really help us run the preserves, which is where her special team, she is one of the individuals to help identify the Heron Mercury. So she has a wonderful skill set that marries very well to the reserves and can be obviously supplemented to develop for parks initiatives, which are, you know, something that she can learn. I will also say that we have very few parks of this proportion. We're, we're really a preserve-oriented in terms of the township. So we have a candidate in mind, I think would be a great person to fill that position. And I would, once again, as I reiterated at all the other meetings, I'm sure we're all in with it. We got a little bit of reprieve this week because it's very dry out and not much is growing. But prior to that, all of our lawns and everything else are going wild, and we really need to address our preserves and making sure that they're accessible to the public. So look forward to that in an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Let me, trustee Corto, our representative to the Planning Commission and Sustainability Task Force, is not present. She, I, I did get a message from her, she was sorry, she meant to send a message to the entire board and start explaining her situation, but she's just been too busy. She is out of town. And the reason that she's out of town is that she's attending to a family medical situation with her father. So she's, she regrets very much being absent again, but that's what, that is the reason that she is not with us this evening. And hopefully, that will go well, and she will come back and rejoin us when she's had an opportunity to handle that situation. Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee.
Well, as Alec referenced, the Prose Plan Public Meeting is going to be on July thirteenth here in the Township Hall from five to seven o'clock. It's an opportunity to review the plan and make comments on it. And we were informed recently by Chris Nordstrom, Carla Warpman, regarding the E N R Spark Grant, which is part of the American Rescue Plan Act, which allocated sixty-five million dollars for Michigan for supporting projects that provide safe, accessible public recreation facilities and spaces to improve the health, introduce new recreation experiences, and build on existing park infrastructure and make it easier for people to enjoy the outdoors. Seems like an ideal opportunity, perhaps, for us to pursue a grant that might allow the support of us extending the bridge in Phase Five or presenting, you know, extending the pathway across the Huron River, which would then connect with the B two B Trail. So it's, it seems like an ideal fit for that and something that I think that we will be pursuing. The grants range from one hundred thousand to one billion dollars. And there's no match requirement, but they just need to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. So that's a, an exciting opportunity for the township to pursue.
That's. Okay, thank you. Roads Advisory Committee, trustee.
No meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. Well, I have a brief report. I've been working with Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Supervisor Sandy Egler to sort out the situation with the various road S A Ds. We discussed at some length during our meeting, a couple of meetings ago. And together, working together with interim Township Administrator Murdy, we have a plan for collecting the installments that were missed for the three S A Ds. And those are Cotton Tail, Thorn Apple, Baker Heights, and Parkridge Laurentide. The uncollected installments had no relationship to the year-end S A D expenses. So that was kind of a confusion that we got into as we were discussing it. It has more to do with the method that has been used by C I O Township for paying S A D costs. And, and that method is to pay for the costs as they occur from the, what's called the pooled account, and then to book the expenses at the year-end to sort of bring things into alignment in the funds that are associated with each of the S A Ds. So it's a matter of accounting, and I will leave the details of that to the accountants, but there is no particular urgency to solving this problem right now in terms of paying bills or anything like that. As the Township Administrator explained, we've been working on the Finance Director Search. And as the Administrator explained, we are also working to fill the vacant Parks and Pathways position, and hopefully, there will be more to report on those positions soon. Many of the comments this evening related to the resignation of the editor of the Township's newsletter. And it is not appropriate for me to discuss personnel matters such as an individual's job performance in an open forum, except to say that, as with everything, there are multiple sides to stories, and we all have our own perspective on our shared history. The effort to build on the strengths of our current staff and address vacancies is a top priority for the Board of Trustees. For all of us, it is important to remember that the ultimate authority, the power and the discretion on how best to meet staffing needs lies with this Board of Trustees as a whole. The recent litigation brought by Jessica Flintoff in her lawsuit against the township challenges the board's authority. This open forum is not an appropriate place to discuss that litigation either. However, we have a court hearing next week scheduled for Thursday, July seventh. So for Sciop citizens interested in the township's response to Jessica Flintoff's lawsuit, those publicly filed legal documents are available on the court's website. And I intend to post them on the township's website tomorrow. Finally, a Sciop Township leader passed away last week. Richard DeLonge served Sciop Township in many roles for over forty years. I encourage everyone to read his obituary and appreciate the many ways in which Dick DeLonge helped to shape our community. I understand there will be some kind of a memorial event at, at a later time to honor Dick DeLonge. That's my report. So that brings us to the. Oh, sure.
I have concerns about the appropriateness of posting the documents related to the motion for summary disposition next week on our website, when that has never been our policy previously. We have not been posting those documents on our website. Now, if we're going to do it for one, we, we should be doing it for all, all lawsuits.
Why don't we check it out to make sure, first of all, that it is appropriate?
Well, I consulted with the township attorney.
Which one?
I consulted with Mike O'Neary. And I believe Mike is available. So if you have a question for the township attorney about the appropriateness of, of posting the documents, we can, we can ask for his opinion. My, my sense is.
All groups the same way. So I, if we're going to do it for one, we should do it for all.
Well, my sense is that there is a particular interest in knowing what the township's position was on this lawsuit. And that's why I thought I would facilitate access to documents that are also available through other means. They're publicly available. Mike, are you available to speak? Mike, so we talked about this earlier today and clarified that there's no reason for the township not to share the publicly available documents. Is there another question that you had specifically, trustee Noel, for?
I didn't have a question. I was raising a comment. The comment that I made pertain to treating all, all groups the same way, to treating all lawsuits the same way. So if we're going to post the public documents, and yes, they're all public documents for one lawsuit, we should be posting them for all lawsuits. We don't need to treat this situation differently, in my opinion. So I think we should be posting all of our lawsuit documents. Kathleen has a lawsuit against the township. Her complaint should be posted. The township responds to her, the answer should be posted.
When, when we have an answer to Ms. Brand's lawsuit, I see no reason why we can't post that as well.
My first one, though.
You would like the township to post the answer to your first lawsuit as well?
No, the contents. The contents of the legal part.
I guess there's no question, Mike. Sorry.
No problem.
Ka-ching.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move approval of the consent agenda? Moved by Jerome, supported by McLaughlin. Let's call the role in this instance. Supervisor Hathaway, yes. Treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. There is no unfinished business. That brings us to new business. And here we have a couple of items that are very similar, but we'll treat them individually. I don't know if you'd like to present the first, the first item, the Van Curler. Sure, or is Andy available? Is Andy Turner going to join us?
Andy's more than.
It's fine.
Joe, Joe. Maynard is available. Andy's right there.
Yeah, I'm in person.
Oh.
We did. Strategic arrival.
Your magic trick.
Yes. Well, hello, board. Thanks for having us. Andy Turner, Parks Advisory Board Chair, and this is Joe Maynard from Washington Engineering. So it may help to have that map. Hopefully you got a chance to look through the materials. I think in its simplest form, these are two properties that were preserved by the L P C. Van Curler, I think, dates back to two thousand thirteen. And what's being called the Merceril properties have, there's been a sequence of purchases and easements, but most lately, this past spring, there was acquisition of two parcels along Marshall Road that then now provides access, potential access for, for the public to, to enjoy that entire piece of land via trails. And the same thing with Van Curler. So I don't know if we want to start with Van Curler Supervisor Hathaway and just, and so I, I provided a map in your packet, just the basic geographics for the, you know, that's, Van Curler, basically the property is in between Joy Road and Huron River Drive. A, a beautiful piece of property. And what the proposal focuses on is creating access off of Joy Road. And I'll let Joe discuss any details or if you have any questions about the proposal. But basically, fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars is, would be Washington Engineering's project management fees. And then it's a unique proposal in the sense that he, there's a reference to land preservation, or excuse me, land renovation, which would be just some basic site clearing done by a preferred contractor. And it's under the five thousand dollar, you know, criteria. So that's what, as you may remember, we had this done by a colleague and a, you know, and, and previously for the other three properties, but we're, we're starting from scratch on this one. So that's the way that Joe structured the proposal. And so in, in our parks group in our last meeting, we were comfortable with this. And so we recommended to the Board of Trustees, so here we are. Trustee Jerome.
I just might add that we have met out on the site for the northern access to Van Curler multiple, multiple times with the individuals with regards to the complexities of accessing that area. It is difficult, but it is possible. We've also met with one of the neighbors. We tried to meet with the other to try to make sure there's some water issues that we were trying to, to address. And that's therefore why we've come up with a determination of this particular location. And we would like to be able to clear that so that there is northern access. And then obviously, would, not part of this particular contract, but there's also a complimentary effort going on for southern access through a different avenue. But yet we're still working on that so that there'll be access on both ends of this. Obviously, primary would be off of the southern access, but we want to make sure that there's northern access for residents up in that area as well.
So in terms of Van Curler, it should be noted that Washington Engineering was hired for some feasibility and precise access points along Joy Road, because there's not very many access points. And so the, the basic concept plan that was in your packet, that is where the, the entrance will be.
Yeah.
And so that should be noted. This has been budgeted and as far as that goes for this, this fiscal year.
Are there any other questions for Andy or Joe?
Just an information question. You mentioned the southern, which is Huron River Drive. Where in the world would you be able to access from Huron River Drive safely?
Well, so it'll be pedestrian only and, you know, I appreciate the question. And so it'll, and this is very, still very preliminary, but the vision is to create, and I hate to do this on this stage, but like, the, the vision is to create access off the B two B trail and be able to cross Huron River Drive, and it can be done. So we're working on it. It's exciting. So we'll have two access points to, to this. I like your thinking.
And it's in coordination with the Dexter Karat Metro Park. And the other, and the Road Commission are working with all those groups to come up with a safe way to cross Huron River Drive that meets all the requirements of a crossing and then coordinate with the Board of Borders so that you have that additional accessibility.
Well, I know you would do it. Make sure it's safe, but I'm thinking. So that's down the road.
Yes, stay tuned. Stay tuned. So I don't, Supervisor, I don't know if you wanted to do this in sequence and approve Van Curler and then talk about Merceril or just?
Do each item separately. But one, one thing I, I, the motion is written to indicate that there will be a review by the Township Attorney because we, we didn't get the contracts to the Township Attorney in time for him to, to look through them and, and give us his feedback. He did take a quick look at it and noted that there's no reference to being in compliance with ADA. So in both cases, we'll need to make sure that we add that to the contract before give it a final approval. But there may be, you know, there may be additional comments from the Township Attorney before we can actually approve these, assuming that the board goes forward with them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that model motion. I just think, I, I, and as you all know, these, I mean, if you're talking from the parking lot perspective, I think that's, can be accomplished. Trustee Jerome can weigh in on this, but you know, Van Curler is a very challenging trail system. So I don't, we're always in full respect of that, but I, the feasibility, there, there's some challenges there.
Being the trail accessible for ADA, I think is, is
Okay.
is not, is not what he's talking about. I think it's the, you know, the, the trail, the trail, trail head. I think is, is, that's what he's talking about.
It's just good, it's good to have clarity there.
I did have a question, Will.
Sure, go ahead, trustee.
On the description of the renovation proposal, you say that the area to be mulched just in the northeast corner. It sounded kind of vague, like there needed to be a better description of the area. Maybe you know where it is. Age three twenty four. Doesn't describe.
Yeah, so if, if the main goal here is to get Washington Engineering hired as a project manager, I would concur that, and in the packet, there is a, a concept plan for the parking lot and that is, is going to be very close. But in terms of a full staking and like a, an exact footprint of what's going to be cleared, that's not quite in place yet. That's why we hired Joe. So it's, it's kind of a sequencing thing, but if the board, if you would like to see that before that work gets commenced, I mean, that we can do that. It's just the main goal here is to get the project manager hired.
I may be wrong, but it looks as from the concept map as if the entire thing is in the northeast corner of the site. Am I right?
Yeah, I think that's why Joe referenced it that way.
Yeah, I think that's why it's. Yeah, the whole, the whole project is in the northeast corner. So they're just saying it would be in the northeast corner of the site. This is Van Curler. This is a holdout for that residence. And then we have another strip over here. But this is a close over in the, in the northeast corner. It's possible for the, the residence.
You know what area they're going to.
It's the only area. That's part of the initial review of the site plan and the layout that we looked at. We did the initial cost with Waco a while back to do the evaluation. And this is the only area that meets all the criteria for the, for an accessible point to the Van Curl property.
And the parking lot will be very similar to like what you're seeing at West Sciop and Liberty Pond. And actually, Washington Engineering has been our project manager for those builds as well. So, you know, we, we've built a, a pretty solid strategic relationship.
And prior as well.
Correct.
Andy, has there been any, we're kind of establishing where the trails would go within Van Curler?
Um, preliminary with, with, you know, with Anna. And our, our group's been out there and I, you know, Alec and I have walked it recently. And so there, there's a template there, but it's going to require, it goes back to what I, some of the previous narrative that I heard that, you know, we're, we're going to need more human resources than we have right now to fulfill that.
Not just volunteers.
Correct.
Honestly, right now, it's the path clearing that's talked by the animal kingdom, which has done a great job actually creating some very N R individuals that were in the past hunting the animal kingdom. So a lot of those are there, but we would be able, we just need to substantiate those maintain at this point. There actually are some very good.
There is a template in place.
That are navigable quite easily throughout, to hike paths throughout the area.
I'm excited about Van Curler. It's such a beautiful property. And I've walked it several times for a part in the south. And of course, it needs a lot of work to clear that area just for.
Yeah, no, it's a jump.
Exciting to see this moving forward. Are there other questions or comments? Are we ready to have the motion?
I make the motion.
All right, so we have moved by Jerome. Support by McLaughlin. And the model motion is to approve the attached services agreement with Washington Engineering Company for improved access to the Van Curler Preserve, subject to review by the Township Attorney and authorize the expenditure of up to eighteen thousand dollars from Parks and Pathways two oh eight seven five one eight one seven. But that, we'll do a roll call since we're funds, or authorizing funds. So Supervisor Hathaway, yes. Treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Our motion, the motion is approved. That brings us to the next item, which is very similar. Andy and Joe, please. Give us a, give us the story. I know this one has a, has a sort of a kind of an odd name because it's kind of a working name.
That's true. Yeah, so this has been the commonly referenced name to describe, because it's, it's been a series of, of different acquisitions and easements that's created a, a real exciting contiguous landmass to, for the public to potentially enjoy trails as a, this one's a little more open ended. I would say that when you look at part one, we, you know, this one's a little behind in term, compared to Van Curler in terms of our discussion and our vision. But we, we were able to do a site visit with some of our team with, with Joe. And when you look at the project description, when you, when you look at the map, there's not very much frontage there on Marshall Row, but we're able to determine a couple of different locations. And, and we had Haben read our best naturalists in our group to really identify a nice footprint that would minimize, you know, tree cutting or, you know, and things like that. And then Joe was able to identify an entrance point that would be the safest in terms of the road commission. And so the, the vision is on its way. And so, but now we just need the project manager to keep moving along and, and doing the sequencing that we do.
So for now, we're referring to it as Merceril part?
Merceril, yeah. And I don't want to throw, there's been some other names. You know, trustee Jerome probably has some insight. I just don't want to start throwing names out that what this is, could be called, but it probably won't be Merceril down, down the road.
Yeah, I would just say traditionally, so the Merceril was the first acquisition, which was a wood, wooded lands. In the back, there was a small access point along. This came along with the Levine property that we were working with. Conveyed a conservation and easement to them with regards to the building. We subsequently acquired additional properties. The one thing I would mention as well is that one of the reasons we're looking to do Merceril, one is obviously to, to, but there's also economies of scale associated with.
But there's also economies of scale associated with Waco and Friar with regards to the work. So they've actually bundled these two together for additional savings. As we, when we do them in a parallel fashion, rather than just as a separate individual unit. So there were some cost savings associated. And that's another reason that we're pursuing this at this time. Because it's inevitable that we want to have access to Mercer. It does have adjacencies to another parcel that's. Had some airing in the planning commission. There's also another access further along. That we've secured previously on another LBC easement. So it's, it's a critical piece to potentially a very large. You know, in the, in the frame of, of Van Curler, another large public preserve accessible hiking space for, for Siamese citizen.
Are there other questions or comments on, on this? Project? I, I have one question that occurs to me and I've been out of the discussion with Parks Advisory Board now for a while. So maybe you guys have covered this, but. Is there, what's the seasonal sort of access plan? I mean, for all the different nature preserves, is there a plan to sort of make, leave them accessible all year round?
Yeah, that, that's been our. Current state of openness. Yes.
Okay. So it's not like the parking lots will close at, you know, for some.
Well, it's, it's, it's dawn till dusk in, in terms of a daily basis, but seasonal, we actually get quite a bit of activity in the winter time. And so our, I, I don't want to speak for our whole group, but our, our basic vision is to always be open all four seasons.
If you just like Siamese woods, just.
A portion of it.
Yep, okay. Many people love hiking in the winter, especially because it's less active activity during that time.
Well, in theory.
Well, in practice too.
Well, I, I, I know someone who got a tick in December.
That was last December. Sometimes you thought it was spring.
Well, it was a pretty warm December. All right. Well, thank you very much. If there are no other questions or comments, then. Someone prepared to make the model motion?
Someone.
Moved by Jerome.
I support.
Support by Noel. The motion is to approve the attached services agreement with Washington Engineering Company for improved access to the. Mercer Reserve, subject to review by the township attorney and authorize the expenditure of up to eighteen thousand dollars from Parks and Pathways. Two zero eight seven five one eight one seven. And we'll do this on the roll call again. Supervisor Hathaway, yes? Treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank, all right, trustee. Thank you, Mark.
That brings us to authorization of funds for legal and professional services related to the Gelman cleanups. And this is a item that trustee Noel and I. Prepared for consideration this evening. It's prompted in part because the cost for the well test project. Are due for round three and we need to replenish that project fund and prepare for. What we're proposing as possibly two additional rounds. We originally thought we would have a fourth round. But given what we've learned and the interest of so many people in the township in participating in the well test project. We're proposing to increase it slightly. It, it costs. If I can remember incorrectly, about eleven thousand five hundred dollars per round of tests. There's about thirty tests in each round. That's sort of the number that we, I think our environmental consultant felt was sort of manageable. And we are also proposing to authorize additional funds for the Gelman legal costs. This is, the well testing is associated with the legal work on the Gelman issue. But it's also sort of taken on kind of a life of its own. Is there anything that you would like to add, trustee Noel?
No, that's pretty, that's a good summary.
How many homes are tested each round?
It has varied. Sometimes one rotten just had fifteen, one round had like thirty one. Generally twenty eight to thirty homes each time have been tested.
There's sixty people currently that want to have their wells tested?
There are sixty applications in our target area. And then there are other applications, like approximately fifty outside of our target area.
If you look in the communications to the board earlier in the meeting packet, there was the press release and the. Map that shows the target area that we've been focused on so far. One of the questions that I think we'll be talking about with. A county and our environmental consultant is whether the test results point towards expanding that target area. Or not, I don't know. So we, we haven't had that conversation yet. But there are an additional fifty or so in that we already have applicants outside of that target area. And we're getting more applicants every day. So. People are very interested in finding out. Some people change their mind when they, when they are informed that. The results of their well test will be public. So we've had a few people that we've approached to have the well test who've declined. Are there other questions or comments? Someone prepared to make them? Okay, moved by Noel, support, support by Jerome. The model motion is to authorize. Fifty thousand dollars of general government, government legal services, one zero one dash two six six dash two eight two six. And thirty thousand for professional services, one oh one dash one oh one dash eight two three related to the Gelman cleanup. And again, we'll do a roll call. Supervisor Hathaway, yes? Treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That brings us to Sio View's master deed. You're batting cleanup again.
Thankfully only to let eight forty this. Good evening, Linda Smith, Sio Township residence owner of the Sio View Residential Subdivision Site. Which is located between Liberty Road and Jackson Road. One entrance is off of Parkland Plaza Drive and we have just installed a new entrance off of Liberty Road in the last two weeks. After a successful launch of phase one, Sio View Residential Subdivision is beginning construction on additional phases previously approved under the Sio View PUD. Sio View Development Residential Subdivision is a one hundred and sixty eight unit approved PUD. Planned unit development compromised of two different properties represented by two separate master deeds. The master deed for Sio View Development refers to one hundred and six single family homes under construction by Lombardo Homes. And the master deed for air housing at Sio View, which I bring before you this evening, refers to the sixty two duplex unit lots on this subdivision site. This is the first amendment to the master deed for air housing at Sio View. And it includes several minor revisions to the original air housing master deed. As well as a Parkland Plaza sidewalk collaboration with TAP that made a minor change to our entrance sidewalk on the north side of the site. Joining Parkland Plaza. This document made some changes required to include the balance of the thirty six undeveloped duplex lots into the master deed for air housing at Sio View. The attached engineering drawings known as the exhibit B to the first amendment of the master deed for air housing at Sio View. Include the engineering revisions necessary to complete this master deed. The changes included have been reviewed and approved by all of the necessary agencies. And this is the final step, board approval and signature by the Sio Township Supervisor before we can record the master deed. Which will become the set of rules that govern the Air Housing Homeowners Association and future maintenance for this site. This should be the final amendment. I believe this includes all of the duplex slots for the air housing site. This is a four phase project. And I believe you will be hearing from Lombardo Homes with the third revision to their master deed for phase three coming up and soon.
Questions? I, I, first I should say that in the materials that were in the meeting packet, there was a marked up. Copy of the master deed. If anyone would like a clean copy, I have some extra copies. Okay.
I have one.
I, I knew you would want one.
No, I already have it.
Oh, you already have.
You gave it to me.
Right, right. All right. Are there any other questions? If not, is someone prepared to make the model motion?
I'll make it.
All right. Motion by Palmer. Support by Noel to accept the amendments to the master deed for air housing at Sio View as reflected in the attached document. Now in this, I think we can do a voice vote. All those in favors say aye.
Well, I think we should do a roll call because when you're dealing with amendments to master deeds.
Oh, all right.
Let's just do it to be safe.
We'll do, we'll do, we'll better safe than sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Hathaway, yes? Treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Good evening. That brings us, I believe, to our second round of public comments. Is there anyone present who would like to comment at this time? Again, you are entitled to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Jerome, are you part time keeper?
Captain Rand, Sio Township. I'm wondering where trustee Corto is.
Her father is dying of cancer.
Thank you for that update. We've never had another update on her absences until today. I want to. Challenge Mr. Hathaway on a comment he just made about posting lawsuits on the webpage. And he made a statement that the township had not made a response to my lawsuit and that's incorrect. They did make a response to my lawsuit, the lawsuit that was challenging the legality of his, of this board voting to double his salary. So that is incorrect. There was a statement in there. There was a response. And so if you don't want to post it, I will just send it to the board so we can get it in the public record. I also want to challenge Mr. Hathaway on his comments regarding Mary Gillis. To say that he can't speak about it, but then to make comments that there's more than one way to look at the issue. Is a perfect example of gaslighting. Did you read Mary's resignation letter, board members? Did you read it? It had very detailed factual content in it. It was very detailed. So when you have factual content, it's very hard for someone to say there's more than one way to interpret that. The Mr. Hathaway's behavior is abhorrent. Mary Gillis is a friend of mine, as she is to the entire community. To. Try to force her to put. Fault statements in the newsletter was of course above her threshold of moral and ethical behavior. And she did the right thing. Unfortunately, Mr. Hathaway thinks that. As Mary stated, that made her untrustworthy. That made her very trustworthy to the residents of Sio Township. And we appreciate. All the efforts he's done. We also appreciate that she revealed. The behavior that's happening. In Sio Township and the behavior that is happening in email conversa, content to staff members. I think we should foil that. Thank you.
Members of the public who are present would like to speak, bring public comment? In that case, are there?
There are. We have Pat Stein followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Pat, you can go ahead.
Good evening. Pat Stein again. I also want to speak to this idea of posting. Legal lawsuits, what have you on our website. With all the lawsuits, with all the dysfunction of Sio Township and with all the press we already get in MY. Shouldn't we be embarrassed? Do we really want to put it out there just how dysfunctional Sio Township is? It's in very poor taste. I mean, it's, it's basically airing our dirty laundry in public. And it's, it's the same as using the Sio newsletter to air your dirty laundry. We'll have that way. I suggest we do not start this practice. Leave it alone. Let's do something right and don't put things like that on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan Greenberg followed by Rob Katzen. Jonathan, you can go ahead.
Hey, thanks. I recently took a job with a company that is based in Australia. Stay with me this one. And it strikes me, first of all, how much they care about our country. And what's going on here and how thoughtful they are. But that also extends to their practice in the workplace. And one of the great things, besides a thirty seven and a half hour work week, one of the great things about working for them is that workplace bullying. In the workplace is considered workplace violence and is against the law. If we only had that here, you'd be in jail, Mr. Hathaway. The way you treat the employees. The fact that Mary Gillis has incredibly detailed and in character comments. That you've made. In your unethical behavior. It's an embarrassment. You should be ashamed of yourself, yet you sit there and you think that for whatever reason. You can continue to treat people the way you do without any repercussions. And it doesn't work that way. Just sometimes it takes longer. It's coming.
Thanks. Next is Rob Katzen. Rob, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Chirp thinking the lawsuit reply to post on the Sio Township website is an extremely transparent move, Will. That is, that is not what a leader does. That is not what an honest person does. I believe Mary Gillis. I read her resignation letter and I believe it. Having said all of that negative stuff, I've got a couple of questions. On the Gelman subject, have you consulted with Dan Bicknell to try and find these other. Low areas that are channeling the dioxide? Does the township, will the township entertain a geologic survey to help us find where the next target areas need to be for these tests? And lastly, will the township consider. Subsidizing the hundred and fifty five dollar Simply Labs tests that many residents are doing. And they're not waiting to be called on by the Sio Township study now that we have access to this test. As of a few days after the news came out, Simply Labs already had ten requests for tests. And they were, it was only accelerating as I've talked to them over the last few days. Thank you. And they were, it was only accelerating as I've talked to them over the last few days. Thank you.
In cases there, a motion to adjourn. By Noel, support by Jerome. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned at eight fifty.